Today is July 16, 2014. It's 10:02. I call the meeting of the Montague County Commission to order. Would everyone please rise for a moment, silent meditation, pledge the flag? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be pious. Okay. Guys.
This morning we have 92 exonerations, $42,810.67 for tax year 2014. Fiduciary orders as of July 16. Also, the second quarterly report of Cynthia Stafford in George Armistead. We also have the fourth and final accounting of the Scotchall Estate and objections to the same that you'll be addressing as a separate issue with some parties that are here.
We'll separate it out. Yes.
Minutes of May 28, June 4, June 11. Vouchers, General County Fund, $298,880.28. General County Fund Purchasing Card, $5,388.11. Cole Severance Fund, $25,000. Kent Monthly, $450. Chestnut Ridge Park, $2,940.29. Mason Dixon Park, $92.91. Mason Dixon Park Purchasing Card, $81.66. Assessors' Valuation Fund, $604.30. Home Confinement Fund, $1,0373.59. A total of $334,811.14.
I move all items except the Scotchall issue.
Second.
I don't want to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
I don't see anyone here from the Assessors' Office. Is there a reason why, I mean, $47,092 issues here right before? Is there a reason why we have so many? Or is it just at the end of the fiscal year? Is that?
2014 tax year.
Oh, so it's the end.
It's just things that went out that have clerical errors.
I understand. Thank you.
You usually have a lot at the beginning because that's when they catch them after.
Gotcha. Okay.
They need to be go out.
Thank you. That's all I have.
I forget whether I seconded. I'm seconding again. Okay. I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, let's deal with the Arthur Scotchall Estate. There was a fourth and final filing that was forwarded to us by the fiduciary commissioner, George Armistead, from Mr. Keith Pappas. And then received the objections from the Administrator of CTA, Judge Larry Starcher. I've read everything thoroughly. The, who's all here to speak to this? Mr. Starcher, are you?
I am.
Okay. Is any, is anyone else from Mr. Pappas or here on the Scotchall thing? If not, Judge Starcher, if you would address us on the issues you want to.
Well, basically, what I want to ask is that the commission take no action on this whatsoever. That I certainly don't want you approving it. It would, Lynn, it would tend to show that you approved the accuracy of it and that it was also approved by the heirs of the proper will, the will that's now being administered. I think you just said, and I know, and heard Mr. Bloom say, that he had also read the objections that I penned out. And I would just say that page 12, the numbers 10 and 11 are pretty telling of the issues that we seek and why we want to reserve the record and not have it in a final form because it would be entered as if that estate was settled and it's over. And that's not the case, of course, as you know. So rather than elaborate on all of it unnecessarily here, I would say that you've read it, you understand it, that we would ask that you take no action on it, just leave it as part of the file till we continue to try to finish up this state in some form. Because right now, the state is basically broke. We've, we've paid, if we would have paid out all of the additional claims, which is mostly lawyers' fees, we, they would have been amounted to $337,000 if we would have put in. The widow's billed legal costs, that would have been another $91,000, it'd be $428,000. We sold the two remaining properties that are not even home producing at the time. We probably had about enough to pay off the claim debts and leave the whole family with zero, including now the widow has passed away, but nothing from her husband. But her only daughter is in full support. As you know, she signed a petition also for the objections.
Yes.
And we're ready to just proceed with the administration of state and try to straighten it up as best we can.
Thank you. Anyone else has any comments? Commissioner Bloom.
I first want to thank Judge Starcher, I still call him Judge, for what you have done because you're trying to clarify an issue that's been going on for several years. And as I stated, I was getting confused. And I think you're really able to figure out what is going on. I do agree with you. I agree that we should take no action. And the only thing I say is I'm very disturbed about this and hopefully we can get this clarified and hopefully maybe make some changes in the legislature or some, this is absurd. This is just very disturbing right now. So I move that we take no action at this time.
Okay. I don't think we necessarily need a motion.
I don't know if we needed a motion, just so.
I think, I think, I agree that we should take no action. Many of the, many of the things, it's just, this might be the case that rewrite some of these laws.
Yes.
I mean, what was most disturbing to me, and yes, the 10 and 11 was most disturbing to, was disturbing to me, but number eight was most disturbing to me because I remember Commissioner Bartolo specifically questioned that that $85,000 be protected and not be spent.
I was told that it was being held to pay the loan back specifically, and of course it wasn't. And what is probably and should be more aggravating is number one, and that is that the Administrator of CTA of the invalid will knew as of March 7, 2014, that the will was invalidated and continued to act and proceeded to write checks, proceeded to disperse monies primarily to lawyers again.
Yes, it went to lawyers. And that's why I found eight so disturbing because of one, because of one, and also prior to the verdict, we specifically made it clear to Mr. Pappas that that $85,000 was not to be touched.
No, we touched it.
Lou Scotchall was shaking his head. He remembers us telling him that. He's not supposed to touch that $85,000. Commissioner Bartolo told him that. He just obviously ignored the directions.
Another point that's extremely disturbing to me is that the beneficiaries of the real will, the appropriate will, and as has been found as a matter of law and fact to be the real will, they paid for their own lawyers to challenge the bad will.
Right.
The folks holding the bad will.
Used their funds.
They used the funds of the estate, which really eventually should have been with the beneficiaries.
Right. Exactly.
And that is why I want to take an official no action, just to show our displeasure.
Displeasure?
Yes. That's why I move again to take no action.
I'll second that motion, just to emphasize our displeasure with the waste of estate that goes to attorneys, attorneys in some cases that doesn't appear like they did much of anything. So I would second that. I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
And we will be seeing you unfortunately again.
I'm sure.
Okay.
By the way, I know there's been several people here, but you remember that I'm doing this pro bono.
Yes.
That's correct.
And that's why I wanted to thank you. You're doing this on your own.
Yes. We need to emphasize that in the record. And I, I know you will, and I know the persistence of Mr. Scotchall there. I've known him for a long time. But I certainly hope that this, this kind of conduct can, to example, can stop some of this conduct for other cases. Okay. Renata. Oh, you got a pal.
Come on down.
One's just really big.
Oh, oh, that's good. So I don't need to exercise my fingers first?
No. They're all grant reimbursements today. First one is for the Emergency Solutions Grant Program. This is for RDBIC, Heritage House and Connecting Link, $46,395.01 for the month of June 2014. We also have the Department of Military Affairs and Public Safety, Homeland Security. This is the grant that we have with the Health Department. This is going to finish up their grant, $552 for the month of June 2014. We also have the DUI grant for the month of June, $9,463.41. And the last is a grant reimbursement and certificate of completion for the Governor's Community Participation Grant Program for Arts Manongahila. They have fully expended their funds. Their requesting amount is $4,023.5 with no change. So there's two signatures required. One on the first page, one on the second. That's all I have for you.
Move for grant reimbursements.
Second. I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. There we go. Wasn't that bad? Thank you very much, Renata. Doing an admirable job. I appreciate it. Okay. Dana. Kine and Dog Center, Dame Johnson.
I want to introduce an employee that's going to be starting on July 21. Victor Reynolds will be training to be a dog warden, and he'll be working midnight shift.
Great.
Let's hope this is the last time for a long time I have to come up here.
Midnight shift.
Be a full-time employee, I assume?
Yes.
Do we have to move?
Yeah.
I so move Victor, what's his last name?
Reynolds.
Reynolds for the position.
Second. I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
I know that we called out midnight, Dana. I don't have to bother you anymore, right? Okay. Mr. Fanick. Petition for annexation area of Oakview subdivision. Mr. Fanick here?
He's in another meeting, and he will get here as soon as he can.
Okay.
Oh. Okay. I guess we ranked lower than the other meeting.
No, no.
No, no. No, I don't want to get into that.
I know.
We're flexible here. That's fine.
Yeah, this isn't the Board of Education.
Oh, yeah, that's on tape.
Okay. Now wait a second. Let's move on to correspondence. To correspondence.
Nothing.
Nothing? No one's writing to me.
The mail is very light these days.
See?
The internet has taken over.
The internet has taken over. Okay. So, all right. No one sent me a check?
No. Not even a nickel.
Okay. Unfinished business. Set date for proposal return county issue survey. Commissioner Bloom, you want to speak to this?
Yes. Basically, what we have, our requesting is a public service survey proposal to be sent out, and it's going through the Planning Commission, but yet we're going to still have final say to sit down with those individuals. We're looking to do, conduct a public opinion survey concerning several issues, and I just generally can say, such as zoning districts in the possible Cheat Lake, Cheat Net, or Stewartstown area, the possibility of additional funding in different areas such as parks and recreation, volunteer fire department, public transportation, patching potholes, and so on. And it gives several different options of how we would fund this. So we believe that it was, the people have been requesting areas to be funded. We'd like to get some ideas of what the community wants, and we're going to have it officially done, so therefore we can come back and then make some recommendations. I will say a couple of the recommendations that we are requesting, we cannot do it this time, but we're hoping that the, we will ask the legislature, which would possibly be home rule, or give us the flexibility to do this. And basically, I'm very excited about this. I think the people in the community will be able to be involved in the decision-making process, and then we will publicly give the results before we move on forward. How's that?
Very, very good, yes.
And I so move that we move forward on this issue due. Is there specific dates that you want?
The date we need to set.
The proposals are due in August 1st by 4:00 PM to the Planning Commission. They'll review those and then refer them to the commission.
Okay. I so move with August 1st as the deadline.
I second. I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. We discussed this in quite detail, I'll just add this to Commissioner Bloom's statement. If we're going to do a survey, we want to do it, you know, with some certainty, accuracy. And the, there's been a lot of talk about a sales, a local sales tax. As a matter of fact, Main Street Morgen meeting yesterday, there was a lot of talk of a local sale, the sales tax, not only in the city, but in the county. The county might be a better level. We have no authority to do that now, but this survey, if accurately done and is favored over raising property, real property taxes by the people, that would give us some impetus to help persuade our legislature. So that's what, that's another reason why we're going to survey.
Or user fees. Some people call it a sales tax, and user fee is another option that I can consider.
Yeah, it's slightly different.
Yeah.
So, okay. Release on pre-properity. Is this the same property that we've been releasing?
Same property, yes. Release of assignment of rents and leases, and release of deed of trust and security agreement, and these are both related to the pre-properity and centrist.
I so move release.
Second. I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay. You think that's it, Phil, or we got another one?
I've been told that that's it.
Okay, great.
Because again, there was a title examination done, and the ultimate receiver of the property indicated that there were several liens that were all as a result of the, then the First National Bank issuance of the 4.8 million dollar bond.
Okay. Very good. All right. Any other unfinished business?
No.
Any new business?
No.
No. Okay. Let's jump, Mr. Burton, are you here to represent Mr. Fanick this morning?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay.
If you want, we can.
You can show him forward.
Come on down.
Okay. Mr. Fanick was going to be here this morning. He asked me to come over because he's tied up in court in front of Judge Gaucho, and he may show up a little bit later. What, my name is Brent Burton. I'm the Assistant City Attorney for the City of Morgantown. And what I'm providing to you today, yesterday, the city adopted an annexation petition, and that's what I'm providing to you today.
You can stand or you can sit, whichever is more comfortable for you.
Okay, thank you. What I wanted to present to you today, first of all, there's a petition or, or order, it's going to be provided to the commission. The, first of all, there's an ordinance which was adopted by the city for an annexation of 13.4 acres. Also, with this document is a certificate. This certificate explains the being, the amount, where the property's located at, specifies exactly where it's at. And then also, for your consideration, is an order. And the city would ask that you sign this order and then enter it, and then that would be provided, a copy would be provided to the city manager's office. So those are the documents I'm presenting to you. Do you have any questions?
I haven't yet. Pass to Diana.
Thanks.
Understand why you just have it now because I watched you all pass it last night.
That's exactly the fact. They passed it last night, and basically the petitions were, they checked into that. The city, the city attorney asked that I just inform you that basically what you're doing under Section 864, this was an annexation without an, without an election. Basically, the petition, there was two petitions. You had the freeholder and then the qualified voters. Both of them passed according to the city's calculations. According to 864, all you're doing is, it's a ministerial function. You're required to perform that function when you're given the documentation. It also specifies in 864 that the commission has no duty to determine whether or not the annexation complies with the applicable statutes, but it would be a city's position if they did.
Right.
And then also, in that 864 annexation without an election, it specifies that you're to be given an order, and it's supposed to be in compliance with 863. So what we've done, Mr. Fanick has drafted an order for your signature which complies with those things.
The, one of the issues that we were notified of along with the city, I guess it was the first reading or whenever it was done, that was referred for some legal question as to whether the, each parcel got a vote or, now, it's always been my, my experience in dealing with annexation as a lawyer, has always been that each parcel got a vote.
Right.
But I guess that's really not an issue. I watched it last night for that specific reason. I wanted to hear what the finding was.
I don't believe the resolution at that meeting is my understanding.
Not that I recall, but, but what Mr. Fanick said was very interesting to me. I think it sort of ends the debate, and that is that whether you take one interpretation or the other, in both cases, you have a majority of qualified voters and a majority of freeholders. So it doesn't matter which interpretation you take.
That's correct. And I believe the city did, just like you had said, as an attorney, you want to give everybody an opportunity to vote, and that, and they did for each parcel.
Yeah. I watched that, watched that, for that, and the parking issue.
Well, I'm not here for that here.
No, we don't have anything to do with it. All right?
Okay. So I would just ask if you would, would sign the order, and then that way, my understanding is, then it has to be presented to whoever, whoever with the commission needs that information, but also provide a copy to the city manager when that's, if you do that.
Yeah. I so move that the acting president sign the order, pursuant to 8-6-4 of the West Virginia Code.
I'll second that. I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Now, part of the city.
Okay, thank you very, very much.
We appreciate, we appreciate all your work. We, we work very closely with that, with that community, and we tried all kinds of alternatives, including a stormwater assessment on our own, only to be found out that the Public Service Commission's never got around to passing any regulations, and we couldn't do it. So that, that was just the only, this was just absolutely the only way to do it, just because even though there's legislation, if you don't have the regulations by Public Service Commission, we couldn't do it. We want to thank the residents that have worked so hard and diligently, and I want to recognize and thank the council persons, Councilwoman Gantz and Kueke. We appreciate you coming here, and we appreciate all your work and effort to help resolve what I consider a real health and safety problem out there.
Well, thank you very much, and I don't think I need any, you think, you think.
We'll need to, now, we'll need to make copies. I don't know if you want to take copies now.
Well, I think right here.
Okay. We'll make, we'll make copies of these documents for our, for our.
So you'll just go ahead and follow them.
Yeah. Yeah. Because that way it'll have the official order on.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I'm glad to have, don't be a stranger, come back and visit. We try to have a good time here. Okay. All right. Well, I'm, I'm glad that.
Councilwoman Gantz.
I'm glad the people are happy.
Hey, Nancy, I was wondering if you could stay for a minute because one of my issues is going to be sending it to you all, if you have a second.
Okay.
I think you'll like it, so.
Okay.
We appreciate, we appreciate that we'll come in.
Oh, okay.
Well, we're just wrapping up here.
Okay, great.
We're to number seven, reports from county commissioners.
Yeah. Okay, two issues. One, I do want to thank, personally want to thank Mr. Scotchall for his diligence. I mean, I believe you may be setting a precedent down the road for future residents who have to go through this, and I do thank you, and I do apologize because I kept telling you, you know, what can we do to turn this over and stop it, but I realize, and again, I can't take sides, but I do want to say how impressed I am that you stayed the course, and the facts are coming out now. So I, I, I want to thank you on behalf of that. The second is, I'm going to request, if possible, and I know we've tried this before, a letter sent to the DOH, but with also a copy to Morgantown City Council members. Again, I happen to try and cross right here, the crossing, right here at Walnut and Chestnut. This is crazy. We need to have a pedestrian crossing there with a sign like you have on High Street, and for two reasons. One, not only you have so many people from the building here, but I watched, you know, during freshman orientation, a group coming down from, and they were dodging the cars. And to me, the PRT is dropping them off. How hard is it to just put a crossing, pedestrian crossing? So I'm going to ask that a letter be sent to DOH, and then send it to Morgantown City Council, since it is your road, and ask for your support on this, which I think you will. And if it's not done, then I'm going to ask that we do it. Because this is, this is to the point now, this is something that, hopefully they will just realize this, but the safety factor and, it, you know, again, I know the city of Morgantown, I'm sure would also be in supportive of this, but I know it's something that's everyone's been walking across here who work at this place, but it just doesn't make sense to me to either go down to the Beechers Avenue or go up to High Street and then come back down. So we'll ask for their permission again. I'd like to see the DOH in writing, explain why they can't do that, if, if.
Well, I, we tried that before you came on, and the response is that it's too close to the crosswalk at the High Street, the crosswalk at University Avenue, and that people that are walking across there are jaywalking, and they should be arrested. So that's the response we, we got, that they need to walk up to the crosswalk, that they're not supposed to cross there, period.
But you have a PRT that's letting off.
I know.
Hundreds and hundreds of people.
It doesn't make any sense.
I know. But I'd like to see that in writing, then.
Yeah. I'm in support of you saying that, and I don't have a problem with that. Is that a motion?
Yeah, I so move, move that we send that letter.
I'll second it. I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
And Steve Fanick has showed up.
Yes.
I just want to apologize to the commission, to the commissioner for not being here earlier within another hearing, running. I do want to thank you very much on behalf of the City of Morgantown and Morgantown City Council upon the actions you took today regarding this annexation. I believe the majority of the people that live in, in that subdivision are very, very appreciative, appreciative of what you've done. Thank you very much.
And please, Pastor, we want to thank all the city of Morgantown because we tried all different avenues, too, and I know I even talked to you, and it came down to, you know, what's best interest for the people and the community, and thank you.
The one thing that everyone has to understand on this, and I always advise city council this when we're moving forward on this annexation, whether or not this annexation was going to succeed was whether or not it complied fully with 864 of the West Virginia Code. Didn't have anything to do with health reasons, it didn't have, it came down 864, and whether or not a majority of the freeholders and a majority of the qualified voters were in favor.
That's right.
So, you know, there may have been some sympathy, but it came down to fully, whether or not there's a majority on each side, and that's why city council made the decision that you did.
Yes, and I, and I made note of that. I watched, watched that, that all last night in the explanation, and I want to thank you all's diligence in clearing that matter up before it got to us, so that.
Thank you very much, and I know Morgantown, the city manager tells you all the time, we in City Hall truly appreciate that you're down here doing the job that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that.[1786.87]
Okay, anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, um, I, uh.
Thank you.
I went to the, uh, the, um, Discover, uh, the Rio West Virginia Transportation Summit in DC. Um, the, both our senators were there, uh, and Congressman Ray Hall was there. And, um, the Secretary of Transportation, the federal US Secretary of Transportation was also present. They all delivered, they all delivered, uh, basically the same message that we have neglected, and we've got to, uh, solve our infrastructure and transportation problems in the areas of keeping the locks and dams open on the rivers, the railroads, the freight trucks, the interstate highways, the secondary highways. They all said, we've got to fix it. Not one of them said how we're gonna do it. You know, raise money, raise money. Well, how you gonna do, how you gonna raise money? So, uh, Secretary, uh, Fox did speak, however, about the, uh, Grow America Act, which, which he says would address a lot of these issues. I haven't had a chance to review it, but, but I hope there is, uh, I, I hope there is a commitment, because I don't care, and I've said this before, people that's been here, I don't care what business you're in, whether you're in government business, whether you're selling hot dogs on the street, or whether you're in the oil, gas, uh, if you're in the newspaper business, you need good qualified, uh, quality roads and transportation. You've got to have it. And the other interesting fact, and they, I'm not sure whether I got this number ready, but it, it costs the average family over eight thousand dollars a year in damages to their vehicles and, 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 uh, extra gas and expenses and maintenance and all uh, because of, uh, bad roads and, uh, truck, lack of proper transportation, because if you got bad roads, then the trucks take longer, and the trucks take longer, then your bread and your eggs go up. It's really interesting issue, uh, and people know that I've been harping about the, the transportation, that we've got to solve our problems here, and the legislature's gotta help us. And I kind of heard that, I kind of heard that from Senator Rockefeller and Senator Manchin, and Congressman Ray Hall, as well as Secretary of Transportation, uh, Fox, that they've got to, uh, that everyone's got to accept that the problems locally is where, uh, the local problems can only be solved locally. That wa- that was also the message. So, uh, so I'm rather encouraged by that, and, um, maybe the other thing they talked about, maybe we might want to get them to come here, uh, especially Secretary of Transportation Fox, because all the things they talked about on their panel, freight, uh, the railroad, the river, the, the aviation, all that are issues right here in Mundyack County. So this, this is a perfect picture for, uh, for the issues that he said are so critical in the transportation area. So I'm, uh, I'm gonna try to work on that. I don't know whether I'll be successful or not. Okay, that's all I have. Reports from elected officials. We have any elected officials here? Kelly, you're here. Do you have anything for us?
I do. I wanted to show you all a copy of what our new tax receipts look like.
Oh, very.
Starting with the twenty-fourteen taxes. We have replaced all of the dot matrix printers with laser printers, and so now your tax receipt will be a full sheet, and we were able to put some information on the bottom, uh, office hours, telephone number, website, and all of that, so.
That's great.
That actually is good, yeah.
And you get a big thank you. Yes, you do, Joe.
So this means you pay mine, right?
I know, yeah.
All right, well, the, uh, what was it? We were having a gone-away party last year, like on the last day to pay taxes. Well, we were having, remember, we were having a guardway party, and a lot of people were coming in, taxes?
Yes.
And they wanted to know why we're having a party, and I told them all, well, because you just paid your taxes. Come on in.
That is right. Retirement parties.
That's right. Okay, uh, is there anything else? Diane, Renata, Bob, Gabby?
One thing.
One thing, yes, sir.
We had our tire amnesty day Saturday, and we collected two thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-nine tires. And also recycled six thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-six pounds of, uh, metal.
Oh, that's good. And that goes for your program, right?
Well, it goes into the general.
Right, good.
Yeah, and, 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 and the, I think the best thing about it is, every year it keeps coming down.
Yeah.
Our, last year we did thirty-three-hundred, and in the past, it's coming down every year, so hopefully it's a trend that's good.
Yeah.
We're, they cleaned up finally, after fifteen years.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, thank you. Okay, any comments from the public? Mr., uh, Kueke, I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you. Uh, is there anything you want to add?
Thank you for the annotation.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the public? We have a.
Move to adjourn?
A second, I have a motion in the second to adjourn on favor. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passed. We are adjourned.